Right, it is nine oh four AM. We will begin this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Let me pull up my agenda for the exact verbiage. Here. The one item on the agenda for this morning is presentation and updates from Brendel Group regarding the Climate Action Plan. This will be led by Gillian Goulet, Brendel Group's Senior Sustainability Analyst. Thank you, Gillian.
Thank you, and I think I'm actually going to be starting and then handing off to Gillian, but I think Gillian is gonna share screen with some slides.
I don't have permission to share screen.
It looks like I. Oh, no, I don't. Just kidding.
Uh, who's gonna share them? It'll be me. Okay, let me see if I can fix that. Okay. Okay, it looks like I am able to share now. Wait. All right, you should all be able to see the slide deck.
Yeah, I think I I can see it. Can everyone else? Everyone seeing it? Okay, great. And thanks, Gillian, and thanks for having us um here to present an update on what we've been up to on the Climate Action Plan since we last presented to you. Um, if you go to the next slide. Um, so just kind of at the high level, um, what has been happening since we last met? We had a community survey um that you probably saw that um had just under two hundred um responses. If you go, oh, uh, we had two in-person engagement events. Um, and then we've been working in the background on the greenhouse gas emissions forecasting analysis, and all of that is feeding into this development of some strategies. Um, that we will share um those draft strategies with you today um for kind of discussion and uh green light to move forward with further analysis and building out those strategies. If you go to the next slide. Um, so first of all, we wanted to share with you some of the uh feedback and input that we heard through the community input. And so go to the next one. Um, so through that survey, I mentioned, yeah, hundred ninety-nine responses, which is pretty good from what we've seen in other communities as far as the survey participation. Um, especially from a community with um the size of Lake County. This slide just shows some of the demographics of the people who responded to the survey. So on the left, um, that graph shows how long the respondents said they had lived in Lake County. So you can see there's a pretty kind of broad distribution across all of the categories that we asked for, with the largest being people who've lived in Lake County for more than twenty years. And so there's a pretty significant percentage of people who've lived there for a really long time. Eleven to twenty is a little bit smaller, but still kind of in that sort of long-term residence category. Um, and then also significant numbers of people who've lived there shorter periods of time. So um you can see that six to ten years and then two to five. And then still about thirteen percent of people who've lived in Lake County for less than two years who responded to the survey. Um, we also asked what best describes their relation to Lake County. Um, so you can see over eighty percent of people said that they live full-time in Lake County. We had a smaller percentage, around ten percent, um, saying that they live part-time in Lake County. We didn't have responses from people who live in adjacent counties. We thought we might get um some people filling in the survey who were kind of interested in what's happening in Lake County. Um, but it doesn't seem at least like that happened. Uh, or maybe they kind of fall in this other bucket of people who work in Lake County. So a pretty significant, um, like, the vast majority of the respondents um being full-time residents in Lake County, which is um kind of interesting and and cool to see. Here's the next slide. So some of the um things that we heard from the survey, so we asked some questions about whether respondents had seen any changes associated with climate change in Lake County. So seventy-four percent of people who filled in the survey said that they have seen climate change in Lake County. And some of the things that they mentioned um were changes in snowfall and snowmelt, um warmer seasons, and particularly winter, uh warmer winters. Um, you can see on the right, some kind of examples of things that people um said that they've seen in Lake County, so snowpack, snowpack fluctuations, increased flooding. Um wildfire, drought, poor air quality increases, um people having to shift their patterns of recreation as weather patterns fluctuate. Um, again, people saying, you know, lower snowpack, uh, it's not as cold overall, but there are some crazy random storms, um summers are hotter. And then wildfire and snowfall kind of being um top uh concerns that we saw throughout, um as well as just more irregular uh and unpredictable weather patterns. Um, we did have some respondents who said that they had a hard time naming changes due to not living in Lake County long enough. We kind of went back to the last side when I mentioned that thirteen percent of people have lived in Lake County for less than two years who filled in the survey. So that might be kind of a correlation between the people who have a hard time seeing change over time and people who've just not lived in the county for that long. So here's the next one. And we also asked questions about what people were worried about when it comes to climate change impacts. Um, and ninety-six percent of the people who filled in the survey said that they're worried about one or more impacts of climate change. And the top ones just kind of reflective of some of the themes that we talked about on the previous slide were um wildfire risks. So eighty-nine percent of people um said that they're concerned about wildfire risk in Lake County. Um, seventy-five percent are concerned about forest health, so kind of connected um potentially to wildfire risk. And then seventy percent are concerned about drought or water shortages. Um, and ninety-seven percent of people also said that they've already experienced the impacts of climate change. So ninety-six percent saying that they're worried about one or more impacts. Ninety-seven saying that they've already experienced the impacts of climate change, including some of those things that we talked about already, um wildfire and smoke impacts. We had quite a lot of people actually talking about increase in ticks, mosquitoes and beetles, and then also changing wild uh wildlife and forest health. To the next slide. And then finally, we also asked people about their priority um for uh sustainability, kind of how important should sustainability be? Um, in terms of local government actions and budgets, how much of a priority should it be at the local scale? And you can see this graph shows kind of the distribution of um the responses from uh nought being it should not be a priority at all to a hundred being kind of it should be a top priority for local government, and the average across all of the responses was seventy-eight point nine. Um, thirty-eight percent of the responses were a hundred, so saying, you know, it should be like the top priority for local government. Three percent of responses were a zero, so saying it shouldn't be important at all. Um, and eighty-five percent of the responses that we saw were over fifty. So even those that aren't saying, you know, I think it's the number one priority. Uh, a large percentage of people think it's at least kind of like mid to high um priority for local government with an over fifty rating on a scale of one to a hundred. I think that is all for the um, the kind of feedbacks uh portion. I can pass it to Gillian, but I can also pause and just see if anyone has any questions on the survey or um the events or any of the other outreach that we did.
I have a couple of questions. Um, and I apologize if if I didn't catch it, but did we have any breakdown? You said we had a hundred and ninety something, a hundred ninety-nine respondents. Is there any breakdown on like demographics of our respondents? Like, who are we, who are we reaching in within the community?
We had that one slide that showed the how the the kind of tenure of residents, or how long they've lived in Lake County, and then whether they live in um, whether they live in Lake County or whether they just work there or are visitors. Um, so if you go back, Gillian, a few slides, there's that one. And then, Gillian, I don't know if you have any other. If we have any other demographic information from the survey.
We do. Um, I don't have it pulled up right now. But um I'll confirm with Duncan that I think we can send the survey results um to the board if that is of interest, if you want to look in more detail.
Sure, yeah, I'd just like to understand who is responding. Uh, it, the more I know about who's responding to these, the more we could look at in the future, who are we not reaching? Um, uh, also, um, in one of the slides, I noticed, um, it it might, I might have just read it wrong, but it looked like it said we had reached a hundred degrees Fahrenheit in the evening, which can't which it must be, I must be reading that wrong, but I, can I get some clarification on that uh slot? Yeah, this slide right here, the bottom one, uh, and and nights are as high as one hundred degrees Fahrenheit for many months. I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're presenting information, it's factual so that it's not disputed.
I, I think this is a quote from a person who moved from Arizona. So they're saying, I used to live in Arizona where the summers are increasingly hotter and nights are as high as a hundred degrees Fahrenheit. And saying that they moved to Leadville for a cooler climate, but that they're seeing it be uh like these other impacts, wildfire, snowfall, etc.
I'm sorry, I just totally misread that and and my eyes skipped over the Arizona part, so my apologies for that.
Thankfully, we don't have to deal with that.
We included that quote in particular because we expect that we'll see more people moving to Leadville for that cooler climate, right? Um, okay, like thinking through that piece in all of this as well.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that'd be, that's uh pretty uh something to really emphasize is that we're gonna, you know, climate uh relocation and climate tourism is a a pretty big impact.
Yeah.
For us here. Okay, thank you for answering those questions. That's all I have. I appreciate it.
Great. Then I'll pass it to Gillian to talk through the emissions analysis piece.
Awesome. Thanks, Imogen. So last time we chatted, a few months ago, we presented the initial findings of our greenhouse gas inventory, which was an annual look at Lake County's emissions. Now, we are going to look ahead to twenty fifty. So when we're looking at climate action planning, right, we're trying to plan for these future scenarios. Um, so we worked with the steering committee to forecast these large buckets of emissions um from our twenty twenty-three baseline with the actual estimated emissions there out to twenty fifty. So this is looking at um population and economic growth values from DOLA. Um, population growth at point two-three percent annually and economic growth at four point three percent annually. Um, and things like residential energy use and gasoline, we're using that population growth forecast. And then that economic growth forecast was used to inform things like commercial and um industrial or institutional electricity use, for example, um, and some of that uh on-road transportation diesel usage. So we're looking out to twenty fifty, and then we identified the big buckets of emissions reductions opportunities that we know of from other communities that are applicable to Lake County. So our big strategies that we looked at here um were increasing vehicle electrification, so reducing on-road vehicle emissions from gasoline and diesel use by electrifying vehicles where it makes sense. So this is looking at um vehicles used by residents as well as vehicles driven by visitors within the county. And then the B in um that strategy column is for buildings. So we have quite a few building strategies there because that's something that's really tangible in the county, right? So increasing renewable energy use and the efficiency of existing homes and commercial and industrial buildings. Um, especially focusing on that efficiency. We're gonna get um in a little bit into like the details of these strategies, right? But how can people save money, um especially as energy bills continue to rise? Um, so really thinking through those pieces of making homes just more efficient and utilizing the technologies that are out there. And then improving the efficiency of new buildings, right? So looking at building and energy codes um that will be updated in the future. And then B five is supporting utility clean energy goals. Um, the utility already has um plans in place for having more renewable energy on the grid, so that will inherently lower emissions. Um, but just making sure that they're actually doing that work is going to be really important as well. Um, and then um F stands for um food and waste. So um reducing the waste sent to the landfill um through recycling, composting, uh waste reduction actions, a wide variety of actions there. So then all of that, um, our analysts, you use that to um look at twenty fifty and see what would the impacts have. Um, so those um strategies that were included in the last slide, we talked to the steering committee and we said, hey, what's actually realistic in your opinion for Lake County to reach by twenty fifty? So this dotted line is the state goal, and as a reminder, this plan is being developed. Um, it's being funded by a grant from the state of Colorado. Um, so we had to include um that line to getting to zero by twenty fifty. And you'll notice that these remaining forecasted emissions, if I can get over there with my cursor. Um, this kind of brownish-beige wedge is what's still remaining, right? So we see a big impact from the utility greening the grid and adding more renewables and reducing those emissions from electricity use. We see a good amount of impact from um vehicle electrification and then from building energy use. And then a little bit from reducing the waste sent to the landfill. Uh, but we can talk a little bit about that um later on, about the co-benefits of that, right? Um, saving some space in the landfill there. So that is the analysis piece. Um, now I want to take some time to go into combining survey results with these recommended strategies to make sure that we are aligned moving forward, um, because our next steps after um we talk to you all are going to be building out the actions that go under each of these big bucket strategies so that we can actually implement this plan, right? Um, so going it by um each of these focus areas, we're calling them. The first one is transportation, mobility and land use. So in the survey, we asked questions about what actions folks are already taking in Lake County um related to climate action. So it was kind of like a check the ones that apply. Um, and then all of our focus areas are going to be set up like this slide. Um, so actions already being taken, twenty percent of respondents have taken public transportation and fourteen percent of respondents have bought an electric vehicle. Um, this fourteen percent seems pretty high compared to electric vehicle registrations in the county. So this could relate to that demographics question earlier from Andy, right? It seems like there are a lot of supporters because this is higher um electric vehicle adoption than we would have already seen um in the county generally. So take that with a grain of salt, but also um it tells us that people are really interested in this topic, which is great to see. Um, in the survey, we also asked about um what they or the community needs to be more prepared for climate change. Um, so looking at these action pieces and thirty percent specifically support more options for transportation. Um, so it's not requiring everyone to never drive a vehicle, right? But looking at those options that can public transportation be more accessible um for folks when they're already traveling to those places? Um, can um biking or walking be more accessible in the scenarios um where they make sense, right? So then we took all of this information from the surveys, from the analysis, and we came up with these plan strategies. And this is what we are going to be putting more detail behind in the next few months um to give you an actual plan to review and approve hopefully later on. But the plan strategies for this focus area are looking at increasing vehicle electrification, right? Um, so that could be county fleet vehicles where they make sense, um providing public EV charging, which can also be a source of revenue for the county. Um, a campaign for residential EV adoption. Um, and then the other strategy for this focus area is promoting vehicle efficiency and multimodal transportation. So looking at carpooling opportunities and how can the county support residents in that way? Um, also thinking about cost savings there, right? If people can drive a single occupancy vehicle alone less often, they can inherently save money. Um, looking at anti-idling signage to align with the state, um, supporting transit ridership and um, looking at education for active transportation and um infrastructure. And we also want to note that there are a lot of co-benefits for these things, right? Um, increasing options for transportation can mean less traffic. Um, EVs have a lower operational cost. Um, public EV charging, as I mentioned, can provide revenue, and there are lots of grants available for public EV charging um that the county could pursue. So all of that to say, um, these strategies are really focused on those lower um cost options for actions that the county can take, and that will be a theme throughout all of this, right? It's starting with that foundational work, um, that's already happening in the county and just continuing that um so that folks have more options available um for their mobility. So we're going to keep going with this same kind of structure and looking at buildings and energy this time. So forty-seven percent of survey respondents have already made energy efficiency improvements in their home, right? C four has been doing a lot of work um around energy efficiency in recent years. Um, so that's really exciting to see that a lot of respondents have already done this because efficiency inherently saves you money, right? You're saving energy immediately. Um, forty-seven percent have done wildfire mitigation work on their property as well when we're thinking of protecting buildings. Um, twenty-eight percent moved to Lake County for a cooler climate. Um, when we think about new buildings and just making sure that the housing stock um is up to date, right? We can expect if people are continuing to move to Lake County, um, that we may need more housing and just making sure that it's readily available. Um, and then twenty percent have bought air filters for wildfire smoke. Um, so a consideration there as well, when especially when people are trying to cool their homes on a warm day in the summer, right? Um, that wildfire smoke can definitely have an impact there. Um, so when asked about what they or the community needs to be prepared for climate change, fifty percent support making improvements to their homes to be more comfortable. Energy efficiency can also have um comfort impacts, right? Making you more comfortable in your home. Fifty-seven percent support the transition to renewable energy. Um, we have often heard that um it doesn't matter where your energy comes from, right? As long as it is reliable and affordable. Um, so I think that um shows up there as well. Um, twenty-one percent indicated that they support um the efforts being made to help residents manage utility bills. Twenty-two percent support developing public cooling or warming centers to deal with those extreme weather events more. Um, and then fifty-four percent support reducing risks from wildfire or weather events. So based on all of that, um, the plan strategies that we are looking at are increasing renewable energy use and efficiency of existing homes and commercial and industrial buildings. You saw those um on that analysis slide. Improving the efficiency of new buildings, also on the analysis piece, um in increasing infrastructure resilience. So that's thinking about um how we prepare the built environment for impacts from wildfire or post-fire flooding, right? Those um kind of extreme events. And then supporting utility clean energy goals. Um, and then just thinking about the co-benefits of this as well, right? It's not only about reducing emissions. Um, efficiency saves energy and money. Preparing buildings for climate impacts like fire, smoke, extreme cold, hotter days help everyone respond better to those extreme events. Um, efficiency improves comfort, as we mentioned. We can also look at improved indoor air quality, right? If we're trying to figure out how are we working through this infrastructure resilience? Um, thinking about that indoor air quality, especially when people are opening their windows to cool down their homes in the summer, that's really important. Um, and then that warming or cooling centerpiece um could help community members prepare for those extreme weather events. Um, so especially if their homes are not um super well insulated in the winter and it's an extreme cold snap, right? Um, having that warming center available could really help residents. And then food systems and waste. So actions already being taken, twenty-four percent of respondents have taken their recycling or waste to another county to dispose of. Forty-six percent have composted food scraps and twenty percent have changed their diet to be more climate-friendly. Um, when asked about what they or the community needs to be more prepared, um sixty-two percent support developing um local food systems and agriculture opportunities. Forty-eight percent support um having more options available for managing waste. And thirty-seven percent support improved knowledge of sustainable practices like mending or gardening, which can also support that food systems piece as well as that waste management. So plan strategies, first one here is reducing the waste sent to the landfill. Um, so this can extend the life of a landfill, which is also really exciting. Um, and then supporting local food systems, so um helping people um remove barriers to um urban agriculture, for example, that's when we see a lot, or um providing um classes similar to like a master gardener course, right? So people can really understand like high-altitude gardening and how um they could utilize that in their day-to-day lives. Um, and some co-benefits. Um, one thing that we haven't mentioned yet is when we are reusing products or figuring out how to mend clothes instead of buying new, right? You're inherently reducing the costs that um residents and businesses have to um spend for their daily operations, right? Um, and also locally available food can help decrease food insecurity, um, which especially um right now, right? That's a big topic. So just keeping that in mind, um, we want to make sure that residents um have that access when they need it. And then natural environment, forests and recreation. So this was obviously a big priority, as Imogen mentioned, that protecting forests and um being resilient um in the natural environment was a high priority in survey responses. So twenty-eight percent of respondents said they have planted drought-resistant landscaping already. Um, thirty-two percent support improving local air quality. Um, Lake already has awesome air quality, right? It's making sure that it stays that way, um, and especially thinking about like wildfire impacts um that have those really localized um air quality pieces. And then seventy-three percent are in favor of protecting natural areas and wildlife. Um, so for plan strategies, this didn't come out in the stats that we're sharing right now. But one thing that a lot of people wrote in the comments um for like an other fill-in-the-blank kind of response is promoting dark skies. People were really interested in um preserving um that piece, right? Being able to see the dark skies, um, but also for wildlife purposes. Um, and then implementing existing plans, there are um a lot of existing plans in the space, right? Um, the uh Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan, um, the Hazard Mitigation Plans, right? You have so many that exist. Um, so providing support where it's appropriate. Um, and we also just want to mention that those plans exist because they're so related to climate action. Um, and then preparing natural areas for future climate impacts. So this could be exploring drought-tolerant plants for parks where it's relevant. Um, or looking at um wildfire mitigation efforts on um county open space properties. So co-benefits for this, improving habitats for wildlife, right? People live in lake because you love the natural environment, you love the wildlife. Um, we saw that come out as um a value in some of the earlier questions in the survey that we covered. So we want to um just continue promoting that. And then decreasing water use overall, we saw that people were really concerned about um drought and water shortages. So conserving where it's possible um in this uh recreation, natural environment piece um can really show that the county is leading the way um for residents and businesses in that space. And then related to water, um, twenty-eight percent of respondents have reduced water use in their home already. And thirty-two percent of respondents have bought a water filter. Um, when asks about preparation for climate change, twenty-eight percent support improved access to clean and affordable water. Um, so plan strategies that we're looking at are protecting water quality. So this could be drinking water quality, right? But also the water quality in the lakes and streams um throughout the county. And then promoting water conservation. So in addition to water quality, having enough water is really important. So um looking at water conservation efforts where people can So um, looking at water conservation efforts where people can reduce their usage. And then the final focus area that we are proposing um, is this administration piece. These didn't really fit in the other buckets, but developing methods for integrating sustainability into county operations, right? We saw that um, residents really support looking at sustainability and climate action in um, local government operations. So figuring out how that looks for the county, right? Is it exploring options for um, continuing a sustainability position beyond that? The sustainability contractor position that was just awarded, right? It could be exploring ways when you are doing budget approvals to consider sustainability, right? Not making every decision, potentially that is the most sustainable or climate action friendly, right? There are a lot of other goals for the county, but how can it be a consideration in that process? And then educating residents about climate change and sustainability. This is another piece that we got a lot of feedback on and a lot of written comments. People want to learn, so this could be um, helping um, the schools provide local curriculum for students learning about climate change. It could be adult education programs. We've seen a lot of communities do um, sustainability or climate change um, courses for adults that are kind of similar to like the master gardener courses, right? But it's focused on climate action or sustainability and how they can um, make changes in their homes, right? So um, having that education piece in there was um, a high priority for our survey respondents. So um, those were the big strategies that we are planning to look at moving forward. And we're interested in hearing your questions where you'd like to know more information about any of the items that we've presented. And also if you have any alarm bells or any red flags for any of those strategies, we'd love to hear that now. So that we don't spend our time and therefore your dollars filling in actions and strategies that don't align um, with where the board wants this plan to go.
Um, I really appreciate everybody's work on this. Thank you so much. And it's really a treat to hear community responses specifically on this topic. I think my, more of my curiosity is around where the project goes, not necessarily any flags about what's come up already, so. I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
One of the big pieces I feel like this community struggles with that maybe was only very, very briefly touched on, but um, I would have liked to have seen more attention to is um, the uh, addressing the uh, inefficiency of the existing residences, um, there are so much fluctuation in this community between people's utility bills. And um, I, I, I think you did touch on it real quick, but I didn't see it come up in any like action items or any larger context. And when we, we've got firsthand accounts of people who have um, you know, a hundred and fifty dollar utility bill in the winter versus some people whose utility bills are over six hundred dollars in the winter because they've got single pane windows, they've got leaky roofs, they've got things of that nature. That is something that I'm, I'm really surprised didn't uh, come up a little bit more, wasn't a little bit more of a focus topic. That's just something that jumped out to me, so. And, and echoing what Elsa said, you know, I appreciate all the, all the work you guys have put into this.
Thank you for that comment. I think I brushed over it, but I do want to assure you that that B one strategy that's improving efficiency and renewable energy use of existing homes. A big focus of that is going to be on efficiency. And um, that like weatherization piece in those existing buildings to help folks deal with those utility bills.
Hey, Matt Bullock here, a quick, uh, just a quick comment to. I would like to see some cost benefit analysis. And also, you know, if you're asking folks to move into an electric vehicle, a lot of people downtown have no way to charge their electric vehicles. Especially if there's no garage, and that's at odds with a lot of the code in the city regarding their um, historical outbuildings in the backyard, which a lot of times amount to an old, you know, shed or something that can't be torn down. So I've always thought that everyone needs a garage in their backyard with a little apartment above it and a nice warm place to charge your Tesla, otherwise it's gonna be very difficult for people to to charge their Teslas with the cords running across the sidewalk. I've seen that a few times. So, I would like to see a cost benefit analysis and especially with some of the weatherization and the upgrades to the code, which is already already pretty strict. And we uh, you know, we now have really high insulation values. We have really low air exchange values in the code. And, and I've heard that the twenty twenty four code is even stricter. So all this gets very expensive. And that's at odds with, you know, our affordable housing goals, so. It'd be fun if you have the capacity to do cost benefit analysis in, in each of the categories and or, you know, just an estimate or something, that would be fun for me to look at. Cause that's, you know, that's what I'm interested in as a, as a builder. What's the benefit? What's the payback? What's the payback on the solar panels? What's the lifespan? And, and also an outlook on what electrification is, is gonna cost in the future. And it's going up and up and up. This area has been spared to a certain extent, but a lot of the areas of the country are running out of electricity, especially with the new A I centers that are just burning through electricity. And so I have a feeling that electricity, if, you know, once we all get on it, there's no way to control the cost. Other than, you know, fifty thousand dollar solar panel, turning your thermostat down. And so, you know, I always said, at what cost? And, and the part of the cost benefit analysis too is if our houses, we have to keep them at sixty five instead of seventy two, you know, that's a cost, that's not a benefit, so I'll stop there.
Absolutely, yeah. Those are very real concerns that I think a lot of communities across the country are experiencing, right? Thinking through some of the points you made, I think the first one that I wanna cover is the E V piece. In that analysis, um, we are looking at the current rate of E V adoption for Lake County in particular. And then assuming that that will continue moving forward. So it's the same rate of adoption, not increasing that. We know not everyone can charge um, at home, right? There are, there can be a lot of barriers to E V adoption. So, the hope and goal of all of this is to take climate action where it makes sense, right? And it's going to make sense at different times for different people, and that's great. Maybe there are people who already have chargers in their homes and they're ready to go and make that switch. Maybe there are people who are not, and that's okay too. And then as far as building codes, that is looking at um, code updates to align with the state requirements. And has been involved in the steering committee some. So Duncan has been coordinating with her to fit so that we can align that analysis with um, planned updates to codes because of state requirements um, for updating those building codes. So that'll be another conversation. And also if that doesn't end up making sense, right? To update those codes, you are not beholden to this analysis, right? This is our best assumptions based on the actions that we can expect to happen. Based on what we know right now, and if that doesn't happen, that is okay. But um, those updates to codes are also assuming um, the state is planning to assign fees to communities who don't update to a certain code by a certain date. So um, it's bringing in that piece in consideration as well. And then as far as electrification of buildings, um, we always say that efficiency is the first step, right? So how can we um, think about those costs moving forward? We can expect electricity costs to continue to rise, right? That's just realistic, it's what we've always seen. So how can we make sure that people's homes are comfortable? So that even if costs are higher, right? They're using less energy, so it's a lower cost than they would be paying. And yeah, I absolutely hear your concerns there, that affordability piece is a key. But thinking about how we can take climate action, save energy while also having those co-benefits of affordability. Yeah, it's on our minds as well, and we wanna um, keep thinking about that as we um, continue this process.
Thank you, uh, and I just got a couple more comments and then I'll be quiet, but uh, I don't like to see the demonization of gas. Gas has, you know, the most B T U's of, of anything, and in this climate, you know, our houses are difficult to heat and heat pumps. From experience, you know, you, they end up with supplemental heat. And we just built a brand new house that had heat pumps. And once it gets below fifteen degrees, their efficiency rating is, is nothing. So we had to supplement with baseboard heat. So I just wanna be careful in the real world here at this high climate. You know, despite, despite what people, you know, seem to think is rising temperatures, there's a lot of things that don't work up here, including batteries and, you know, trying to charge your car out on the curb in ten degree weather, it's just not gonna be very efficient. And the one last thing, and then I will be quiet, is I'd, I'd be interested to know how any sort of geoengineering is affecting snowpack. There's well over three hundred um, you know, snowmaking machines or cloud seeding machines in Colorado. A lot of times Aspen will get seven inches and we'll get zero. And so, um, so they get to ski powder and we get to ski crust. So that's uh, that'd be something I'd be interested in, in you guys looking at. And that may be just the tip of the iceberg in the geoengineering department. Now I'm quiet.
Imogen, what were you going to add?
I was only going to add that um, we are doing that cost analysis. And so we didn't have it to share here, but going back to your point about it, it would be nice to see the kind of cost benefit analysis with some of these strategies. Just know that that is underway, and we wanted to kind of bring the strategies here today to make sure they're kind of directionally correct. And before finalizing some of the cost analysis. And a lot of that will be also looking at like case studies of what, what, what's the, so we take like an example, residents in Lake County, what kind of costs could they expect to see from the weatherization and the efficiency upgrades and that kind of thing that we're talking about? So um, you will see some of that in the final plan as well.
Okay, thank you.
So as far as next steps, we are planning to um, move for, move forward with adding actions under each of these strategies. So that it is as detailed as we can make it, right? To make it easier for the sustainability contractor position to um, implement the plan. And that will include those um, cost estimate examples as well as um, some grant recommendations or funding ideas, right? There are fu, there's funding from the utility and from the state, um, some from the federal government as well still. That um, we just wanna bring it all together to make it as accessible as possible. So, I believe Elsa, you had mentioned having questions about next steps. We are also planning to um, meet with some county staff as well as with um, C four, just to talk through those implementation pieces. Just to again, make sure this is as implementable as possible. And then we will plan to um, write up the plan, bring in all of that input and then bring it to you all for a final review and hopefully for plan adoption. We're looking at February for um, that final presentation. So I'm happy to answer any questions on um, how we wrap up this process as well.
Great, thank you, Gillian. Um, I have no further questions myself. If anyone else on the board or anyone in the room wants to add anything, go ahead.
Um, I just, I guess I have one last question, Gillian, and that's like in terms of the next steps. Being ready for that January presentation, do you feel like there's anything the county needs to be moving more quickly on to be set up for that transition, or where do you feel like we're at?
That is a great question. I will give a shout out to Duncan. He has been great and incredibly responsive and connecting us with the right people. I think um, as a next step, we are looking at um, gathering county staff together, as I mentioned, right? To um, get some input on how we implement some of these strategies that are applicable to their day-to-day jobs. And then um, as you all are looking at getting that contract in place for that sustainability position with C four, when that is ready, I think C four will also help inform um, a lot of these strategies and just the how behind all of this. So I don't think there's anything that needs to move forward more quickly than it is right now. There are just a few pieces that um, we'll keep working on.
Awesome, thank you.
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, great. I guess um, you know, in closing, when we're looking at bringing, uh, looking at this um, next steps in January, just keep in mind that like we're in some pretty unprecedented times with not only us, but all local governments being pinched extremely hard. So, if the focus is on things where we can increase efficiency, that also helps reduce costs for the county, those are gonna be things we are gonna be able to jump on immediately. When we're looking at things that are gonna have um, cost burdens, those will be really a lot more challenging for us to implement. So just keep that in mind that moving forward, we really have to take the a hard look at every dollar that we're spending and, and you know, and it's not just us, it's all sixty-four counties, it's at the state level all the way up to, you know, wherever. So um, that's just something I wanted to throw out there real quick before we, you know, closing anything up.
Awesome, yeah, that's also on our minds, um, and just keeping cost at the forefront here. A lot of what we are looking at is focused on um, just staff capacity, right? Not additional costs ideally, um, keeping things as low cost as possible. And that contractor position will be key for that implementation piece because there's that staff capacity there.
Cool, all right. Uh, anything else from anyone in the room? Okay, well, thank you guys so much for coming in virtually and speaking with us today. Uh, we appreciate you guys here and everything that you're doing. And with that, if no one has anything else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the work session up. So, it is nine fifty-three A M. We will conclude this work session in Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Goodbye, thank you.